And to council, I hope that since we last met, 9th of July, I hope that that's been enjoyable, relaxing time for me. It hasn't. It's been very, very busy.
Don't you go ahead.
Do we have the mics?
No mics yet. Oh, unless this is going to do the job for us here?
Well, that doesn't continue.
So...
No way, man.
You press your buttons.
You're all rolling. Testing.
How would you do, Mayor?
Like to call a meeting to order? Welcome all of council tonight. Welcome media. Welcome Alexis in the gallery. Alexis Fox in the gallery. Administration. I hope the last few weeks since we met on July the 9th has been relaxing, enjoyable. As I said a minute ago, for me it hasn't. It's been very, very busy. So, we will start off with Counselor Smith offering the implications.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're so grateful for how many blessings Vassal has given us. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to be here at council tonight. They're thankful for the opportunity that we have to represent the good citizens of Cardston. I see you helped us to make those decisions which would be wise and prudent towards our community. That we will be able to make our community better and stronger with the decisions that we make. Us that we will be cordial in our meeting and that we will be thoughtful and respectful of each other. Thank thee again for all that Vassal has given us. In the name of thy son Jesus Christ. Amen.
I'm looking like a caboy because we just did the parade. We've got days in Lethbridge and I've been there every minute since we got back. But Counselor Creed was there. He's in his blue shirt. And Counselor Dowell, Counselor Court, Counselor Cronin. We had an enjoyable day. It was a delightful parade. But Cardston does something that I think is very wonderful and unique. We have the bleachers down there. So folks that are at the head of the parade get to dismount or sit with bleachers and watch the parade. And I don't know any community that makes that happen. Additions to the agenda. We have 7G. We have a piece of correspondence requiring a decision. That's a late addition to the agenda. It's this piece right here. You've got that. 7H has to do with a municipal finance conference in Saskatoon. And just got to go through my notes to make sure that that is all. And I think that is all the additions that I have to bring to the agenda. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda with those additions? Counselor Dowell, so moved. Any comments, questions, any? I will call that question in favor. Agenda is adopted with those two additions. We will move into some delegations. There is a bit of a change there. Because of a mishap, we will have the pool construction report given to us by Jeff rather than from the member of our recreation staff. Dave Pilling has experienced, I will call it, a minor mishap. And I have asked if Marion, on behalf of council, mayor and council, would express our concerns to that employee through his forum. So Jeff Shaw will give us the pool construction update.
Okay. I apologize, council, if I'm looking at some notes a bit here. I wasn't anticipating giving the report. So the purpose of this, I just wanted to, we wanted to make sure that you as council were up to date on the progress down at the pools. It's a significant project that I'm sure you get a lot of questions in the community about. In your package was a, it was a duration schedule, a Gantt chart. I know some of it's a little bit tough to read. It's a bit small, but it gives you some indication of the steps they're doing in this project. I just handed you, and you've seen this before, but it's simply just a sketch of the plan. A simplified sketch of the plan.
Jeff, if I could, does anyone in the gallery, do they have that sketch?
They don't. You can certainly pass that around if you'd like.
Sorry that there is only the one copy. Jeff is flying just a little by the seat of his pants because of this mishap here, so go ahead, Jeff. Sorry about that.
No problem. So a couple of things, council, you'll recall, I was emailing you back and forth. I just want to start even pre-construction. All of our contracts and supplementary conditions have been settled. We're in good shape. We have a good contract. Both parties feel that they have adequate levels of protection and adequate levels of scope. And everything in there is good, so I'm really happy with that. Our security and all those things are in place. We've got all that paperwork done. We're holding the line of credit and the holdback in the contract. So we've got the line of, letter of credit in the safe. And we've negotiated the holdback and statutory declarations. By them, that all of their subs and suppliers are paid every month. So we feel good about our security piece at a reasonable cost. So as of right now, as you've seen, well, I guess you've seen very recently, if you've gone by, that the walls are formed up on the pool. So if we go back a couple of weeks ago, day one, we were a little bit worried about day one. We ran into an overrun and a change order on day one of the project. And thankfully, we've been able to work ourselves back to even on that by helping out a little bit. The soils engineer came down as they were excavating for the lane pool and said that the soil wasn't suitable for compaction and that they needed to keep digging until they hit some. But we ended up really, really deep. And we found water before we found hard ground. And we found all kinds of fun things. But we supplied all the pit run. We had a pretty good stock of pit run out at our pit outside of town here. So we supplied all that. And we helped with the trucking. And we've been trading off some services and good things like that. So we didn't end up having to do a change order for excavation. And also, we're going to have the county do the second phase of excavation to offset the additional charges from the first phase. So that all worked out fine when it was all done. But we were a little worried that we were mere hours into it and talking change orders. Since then, everything's been smooth sailing. So that was done. The floor of the lane pool was poured last week. And that was quite a project. We had a crew, we didn't, Acapulco hired a crew, about 12 of our local cement guys, most headed up by Ken Wilde. He brought in his crew and I think a few of Mike Schaefer's guys. And when you have to do one continuous pour with no seams uphill, you need a number of guys on that job. So you have a significant slope. And you can't form it anywhere except on the extreme perimeter. So it was, I talked to Ken after and he said it was more difficult than they thought it was going to be. But they did it all in the time that, you know, the open work and time spent. So that was done. And that seemed to go pretty well. You may have seen, they kept, they put burlap over top the cement after and they put soaker hoses on it. And they just kept weeping water over it for about three or four days afterwards so that the top didn't prematurely crack. And then that top is epoxy when it's all done for the pool floor. Walls were formed up today. Now, one thing just to note, if people are asking, this stage will look like it's sitting for a long time. There'll be about a few weeks before they pour the walls because now they run all of the plumbing in those walls. So they have the interior wall formed. And now on the exterior, you'll start to see white PVC pieces and piping go in all through that. So if people are wondering if something happened or why we're not pouring walls, it's because now the plumbing begins. And they'll be working on that. And then the leisure pool portion, the floor is anticipated. They're looking to pour that in five to six weeks. And the reason for that too is that all the underground has to be done by them because it's all running underneath that or around it to go into the mechanical room. So the mechanical room is totally stripped and cleaned out with the exception of the domestic hot water tank and the air exchanger for the building. But everything else is gone. They've drilled all of their supply and return holes in the wall. And things are going along pretty good there. We've had, we're contemplating two change orders that I wanted to make council aware of, just for your information. One of them is, well, I guess two and a minor one, two and a half. But one of them is looking, when we did the quote from Acapulco, they quoted chlorine liquid as the treating agent. And we're looking to change that to chlorine gas. The town had chlorine gas years ago. And it became the, everybody kind of moved away and started going to saltwater pools. And now everybody's going away from saltwater pools. And the reason is they take so long to shock and turn over if you ever have a problem. It can be 48 hours to shock a saltwater pool. So everybody's got to leave. You got to run all the water. And with chlorine gas, it can be two or three hours. And you can have it shocked and back. The reason we're looking at chlorine gas as well is because of return on investment. It's going to cost us probably about 15 grand to upgrade to chlorine gas. But we anticipate about a five to seven year payback on that. So if we're looking at 20 to 25 year life on the equipment, we think that's a pretty good return on investment. Your chemical costs per year go down by about, almost two-thirds, from half to two-thirds. For our pool, for seasonal, we can buy 200 pound tanks of chlorine. And that should run us the whole season. And one of the criticisms of gas is it's volatile. And it is. It's very volatile. But if we can do it this way, we can, we'd never let one of our seasonal staff change a chlorine tank. So we would get our two tanks at the beginning of the season. Our trained operators would install them. They have an automatic switch over. And at the end of the year, our full-time guys would remove them. And the same supplier that supplies our water treatment plant can supply the pool. So we have supply for it as well. So that's one change order we're contemplating. It's not a done deal because we have to do some renovations to that old chlorine room if we are going to do that. And we're just getting a couple of costs on that. The other one is, in the quote that Acapulco did, they quoted a pool heater, essentially just a big hot water tank. And we are looking at changing that to a high efficiency boiler and exchanger. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is efficiency, operational efficiency. But the other is lifespan and life cycle. When you run chlorinated water through these pool heaters, you get the same problem we've had for years with our pool heater. Is you corrode all of the copper and the piping inside. So we're looking at going to a high efficiency boiler with a stainless steel exchanger. And then the chlorinated water never runs through your boiler. And these new high efficiency staged boilers can run a lot more efficient than the pool heaters. So those are two contemplated change orders that we're just want to ensure that financially, we can find trade-offs somewhere else to make that work before we tell them to go ahead. And we're getting close to the time that we have to make those decisions. But we're still working on all the exterior plumbing. And that interior stuff isn't pressing on us too hard. One minor change order is we're looking to change a couple of the pool toys that were originally spec. But that's just basically a trade for different things. Not a big deal. And then lastly, we are, we tentatively penciled in and we'll get some information out to the public here about having our open house on September 19th to answer questions and show people we should have some good conceptual drawings by then. But we also would like to use that night as our fundraising kickoff and have all of our fundraising information in order and ready to go. So we think that we can do both those things on that night. Again, the date's not set in stone. Dave and I were just talking dates last week. And we kind of pulled out one out of a hat, frankly. So we'll look if there's anything conflicting in the community. But right about that timeframe is when we're looking to do fundraising kickoff and open house. Other than that, if there's any questions, I think I should be able to answer them.
Jeff, thank you very much for that sort of extenuating sort of update report, council. Any questions, council, please?
Jeff, early on, there was discussions about entrance to the mechanical room for equipment. How was that handled?
What we were able to do is we were able to find equipment that would fit through the existing openings. So we are probably going to do a little bit of handiwork on a couple of the walls to get around some corners. But they're just stud frame walls and no collateral damage, really. We're going to have to remove the framing off of the door that goes downstairs because we'll literally have a half an inch to spare. But yeah, we, we're pretty sure, the contractor's pretty sure that everything will fit through that stairwell that goes down to the door.
Jeff, thank you so much. You've been, did you just say that, council? Go ahead.
Just the, you just mentioned the fundraising, things like that. Is the, do we have someone that's going to take responsibility for?
I don't have, I guess to say it in a public meeting, no, I don't have anybody set in stone yet. We have some people we've talked to, but they're not, everything's not lined out. But yes, we'll have some third party helping us with fundraising.
Jeff, you've done a tremendous amount of work. I can't even begin to comprehend. The last two or three years has had this pool situation pretty much on the front burner the entire time, maybe even longer than that. So thank you very much. Is it fair to say that, pretty much at this point, as much as you're able to comment, pretty much on schedule?
Yep. Everything looks really good. We started a week earlier than was, two weeks earlier than originally scheduled anyway. So we did spend an extra three days in initial excavation. But we had a little time there. So we're still very comfortable that everything's good. Just for your information, Bernie Gall, who you've met, the president of Acapulco, he's coming out Thursday. So he's been coming out about every two weeks, actually, just to see how things are going and checking up with us. And they've been great to deal with. And we're really happy with working with them so far. We've gone through one billing cycle now, so we have a bit of a feel for how that's going to go. So we paid them for everything in July. And everything's been really smooth so far. It's been, been good.
Counselor Cronin?
Can I just ask something? Jeff, I don't know, regarding this drawing?
Yep.
I thought we were still having six lanes. Am I counting them wrong? I count five lanes here.
Each one goes?
No, there's just six. Yeah, that's the center of each lane.
So the lines, those represent the lane? Okay, so.
Those are painted on the bottom on the center.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So we have six, which is good. Thank you.
Jeff, thank you very much. We'll now invite to podium Alexis, who will speak to us on the issue of the racism discrimination initiative.
Thank you, mayor, councilors. Let me know if I'm talking too quietly. I can do that sometimes. So I spoke to you during the October 9th, 2012 council meeting about the Canadian Coalition of Municipalities Against Racism and Discrimination. Lost my spot already. So CMAR for short. I would like to apologize for not reporting back to you yet on this. The progress on this project has been, well, not as quick as I would have wanted it to be. So I really haven't had much to report back to yet. I would also like to suggest that perhaps we no longer focus our efforts into this coalition. The reason for this is although CMAR is a great program, it really is, it has become clear to me over the past months that it may not be the best fit for the town of Cardston. In order to join the coalition, we would be obliged to work towards all of the stated goals. Some of which may be ill received by the citizens of Cardston. Might not be what everyone wants to see. Because of this and a general lack of response from community stakeholders as well as from CMAR, I did try and contact them and get some things started. But I really haven't heard anything from them the few times I have tried. I'm recommending that instead of pursuing the CMAR coalition, we focus on a more grassroots approach. By addressing what the community has identified as priority areas where needs aren't being met, we can work to develop programs that will have a greater significance to the community as a whole. The Cardston District FCSS organization will be conducting a community needs assessment over the coming months. Asking local groups, organizations, and stakeholders where they, where they feel needs aren't being met and how these needs can be better addressed. The FCSS organization will be using the community needs assessment to determine if the programs they are currently funding are actually meeting the needs of the community or if any adjustments should be made to ensure these needs are met. Administration feels that pursuing this project instead of CMAR will be better received. We will not only be addressing the needs that were identified by citizens, but in doing so, we will create a channel through which they can positively influence the social environment of our community.
Alexis, thank you for that report. I just got a question.
Of course.
I've got, of course, council. Any comments or questions from council? Go ahead.
I just, you know, when you, when you first started the program, I think I made a comment to you that I'd like to see, you know, the positive approach taken on that. I think that's the direction you're headed. And I think if we highlight areas where we have success stories to tell rather than on negative aspects, I think, I think it'll be a great, great way to go with that program.
Thanks, council.
I just wanted, because I'm curious. Have you had any dialogue with the responsible individuals in the education community? They have, from K to 12, sort of captive audience, if you will, for nine and a half months of the year. And I just was curious if you've had any information, any discussions with those folks about how they approach these issues?
To be honest, I think when I started, I didn't have a full understanding of everything that I needed to do. I might have been a little bit over my head with this project.
Fair enough.
But I did send out a letter to the school division and then to each of the principals explaining and outlining the program. And I didn't receive anything back. Granted, I could have probably hounded them a little bit more. But I, it didn't seem appropriate at the time. Because I thought it was, if they didn't respond to that letter, it was kind of just the introductions.
Hard to know whether it's fair to draw any conclusions from that, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. So having said that, any other questions or concerns from council?
So, yeah, do you know what your, for the needs assessment that you're going to do, how are you planning on finding out? Is it a survey or how are you?
Yeah, mostly through survey questions. I've received copies of the Lethbridge needs assessment that they did, one in Calgary, and then a few other smaller communities in the province. And I'm just going to be working off of that for good ideas. A lot of it's done by survey questions. So I'll be asking groups that are already in place, like the interagency group, and then approaching the education sector and the health sector and things like that. As well as discussing it with our already funded programs.
Now Alexis, if I'm reading the signs right, going through Fort McLeod, is the organization that they're part of, is it one of the same organization?
It is.
Have you had some dialogue with the folks over there?
I did. When I contacted them, they didn't really have any contact for that program anymore.
Gotcha.
And they told me to contact Farah, who was the inclusions consultant with the city of Lethbridge. And I did, and had a few meetings with her. And they're very, very good. But she also recommended that maybe it might not be something that we want to pursue for our community.
All right. Having said that, council, let's have a chance to make some comments. Thank you very much, Alexis. And again, we truly appreciate the work that you do, both in this domain and in the FCSS area as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, I'd like a motion for adoption of the minutes. July 9th council meeting. Counselor Cronin, so moved. Any discussion on those minutes pursuant to the motion by Counselor Cronin? I would call a question in favor. Minutes adopted by motion of council. Will now move into the business horizon. Marion will speak to the issue of disaster funding. We've been waiting on this resolution or report, if you will, for a good few months. So I'll give it to Marion.
Thank you, Mayor Scal. As the mayor alluded to, we've been waiting on the disaster program for funding on the 2010 disaster that we experienced. And the last outstanding invoices were regarding the golf course repairs. There was some back and forth between the program coordinators and ourselves, as well as trying to get some verification on some of the invoices that were submitted. We have now received confirmation from them on their funding. They've actually reduced the invoices that the town of Cardston submitted by $4,309 of programs that they felt, or sorry, invoices they felt did not qualify under the program. Whether they were considered pre-flooded invoices and a couple of things like that, where we used our inventory, yet the invoices we had for proof of the inventory was pretty bad. But as you're well aware, two of the invoices that we submitted were work that the Black Sands Management Group did on our behalf of the course. One invoice was for $10,758. Now, this doesn't include GST. And that was for irrigation repairs. The program office has determined that that is not eligible because they feel that the irrigation repairs that took place in 2011 and 12 are ongoing maintenance issues and that they aren't directly related to the disaster of 2010. So they are paying zero on that invoice. The second invoice was for $12,480. And that was for reconstruction of the 16th green. And in hindsight, what we should have done with that is we should have got a quote from Black Sands. Had that, we would have submitted that then to the program office for verification prior to beginning the project. But we didn't do that, and I apologize for that. But they have actually reduced that invoice. They are only going to pay $6,949.49. So in the whole scheme of things, they have been reduced by a substantial amount, approximately $16,000 of the invoices that Black Sands submitted to us for that work. So I've met with Dean Sommerfeld. He understands what the program is paying, understands what the ramifications of that is. And he's asking, through our discussions, that we propose the following to council. Currently, including GST at this point now, we have outstanding invoices from, that Black Sands owe us in the amount of $25,163. Included in that is the two years of the lease payment. One at $10,500 and the other at $52.50. The proposal we'd like to put forward is that we pay them the $6,940 or we take that off those invoices that the disaster program is prepared to pay. And would like to propose that the two lease payments outstanding be waived. And that would leave about $1,500, $1,600 that Black Sands would still owe us, which would be to offset the costs for the invoice or the preparation for the foundation of the building. Dean has asked that I present that to council. Again, we learned a couple of valuable lessons here, I guess. If we are to get a private company to do that type of work for us or the management group to do that type of work for us in the future, we'll make sure that we have those quotes in place and that they're approved through that funding ahead of time. Any questions? I tried to run through that fairly quickly.
Counselor Cronin?
Can I help you understand? Why was the request to waive two-year lease payment? Do we feel that the town is responsible for those bills because we have not followed a due process regarding the quotes? Is that why we are asking to do that? Or is that just because it's a way to?
I would suggest that that could be part of it, I guess. But when Black Sands took over the course, the disaster had already happened. So it was already established that there was going to have to be some repairs done there. And in fact, in our lease agreement, it states that the town would be responsible for the repairs from the disaster with the intent that the program would pay for all of those costs. I think that Black Sands just, and you heard in their presentations they've made to council, that they feel that they were doing that work in good faith on behalf of the town. And that they, if it was any other organization that had done that work for us, if we had contracted a third party and we received an invoice from them, we would be responsible to pay that invoice. So they're just trying to find a fairness, an equitable, I guess, distribution of that.
Okay. May I ask you? You're telling me that for the 16th green, let's talk about that one. The bill presented to the town was $12,480. But the assessor only felt that $6,400 was also, was what's, was a fair amount. So what are we supposed as council to make out of the difference? $6,000 difference is fairly large on a piece of work. $6,000 difference is fairly large on a piece of work.
Yeah. And if you recall from our previous conversations around this, that was one of my concerns when the invoices were submitted, is there wasn't a lot of background information with those invoices. In fact, there was none originally. And I was concerned that they would question the value of some of that project. And so that's why I recommended to council that we wait to see what the disaster program would fund prior to paying those invoices. Can I justify the difference? I don't think that I can. But the reason the engineer from the disaster program was only prepared to pay the $6,400 was, they go through an audit process as well. And unless he had documentation in place to be able to back up any invoices, it puts them at risk in their program for the audit purpose. And so not having that firm documentation in place, I think was one of the main factors for them reducing that amount.
But that's true for town too.
Yep. Correct. And you can see that we were reduced by $4,300 of our invoices as well.
Because, I mean, should we pay that extra amount of money for something we have really no good documentation for? That's what the taxpayer in fact are asked to pay.
And that's, I guess...
I find that difficult to accept.
I guess that's a question before council. Dean did say that, he'd ask if I would present that. And if you wanted, he would be prepared to come to council further to this meeting. But he just asked that I do this tonight.
Let me, let me speak to this just a quick second. In a normal arms-length lease arrangement, you make money wonderful, you lose money too bad. This group is operating our golf course for us. If we see no red ink in the process, I'm happy. I am real happy. Because if you were here the three years prior to the term of this council, you saw us bleed and bleed bad in this golf business. If we have a no-red-ink situation, I think that's win-win for everybody. Remember, they are operating our golf course for us. They're in it to make money.
Wow.
But if, but if we see no red ink...
I see this as being red ink that they're offering right now. That's red ink. They're coming after the town for that.
But remember, they inherited the course with damage prior to them taking over.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I think we're between a rock and a hard spot.
Okay.
Just, you've had your time for now. Anybody else comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Marian, what, given, you know, the figures that you've given and the waiver of the fees, would there be a net loss or gain or, you know, to the town? Like, where would that leave us overall? Is it, is it, is it a net cost to the town for this? Or, or, or does it kind of even out somewhere?
From, from what's outstanding in invoices, is that?
Yeah.
Well, there would be a net loss, I guess. They would have to still pay us between $1,600 and $1,800. But that would go towards the invoice that was 70, sorry, I just have to pull it up We had an invoice for helping build the foundation for that building. It was $7,596. So they would be paying us about $1,600 net, but it would go towards a $7,500 invoice. So yes, there would be a net loss.
Counselor Smith.
The, at the end of their lease agreement there, is there, is there something in there saying that they'll be compensated if there's an increase in value in the golf course for all that? So if they were determining their lease agreement, like with all the money that they put in, they're not going to be compensated anything for that?
Correct.
They would walk away with what they own, what they purchased?
Well, they have, they have to replace, they have to return the value of what was given to them at the initial state of the lease.
So if that golf course is worth more than when they took over, there is no compensation?
No compensation to them now.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? Councillor?
We've been dealing with this since before they took over the disaster. I'd like to figure out a way that we can get past this 16th hole and all this other stuff. One way or another, it could cost us a little bit of money because, as you mentioned before, it was costing us a whole lot before. If we get past this, then it's their headache. We've got the disaster taken care of, that they were not responsible for, they weren't running the golf course at the time. So maybe we may have to give up a little bit of money to get past this hump, this 16th hole disaster, and then move on from there. We were losing substantial miles the night before this, and it's been really nice not to have to deal with this as frequently as you did in the previous council.
Okay, councillor Cronin?
I believe that that group has done a good job to service the town and the golfing community. There is no doubt in my mind that they have fulfilled that mandate very well. My own concern is regarding the lease, the way we have entered into a relationship with them, which is a commercial relationship, it's a lease. The lease, when we decided on that lease, we also said that every year, there would be a portion of the money that we did not ask them to put towards the rent. If you remember, we lowered the amount from $20,000 to $10,000. But we had also said that we wanted to prove, to have proof and bills regarding the upgrades that were made on the golf course. That has not happened yet. And it has to happen. The lease has to be brought into a fair, a fair dealing situation with the town. That is something that's part of the lease. I would like to see it done. I don't say they haven't done it, Courtney. I know they have.
We just have to ask for it. That's all we have to do is ask for it.
But we have asked for it. It has not happened, and it's part of the lease. I know that it's their responsibility. Now, I also understand we are in an odd situation, and I'm glad, Marian, that you say there's something that has been learned there, which is that we need to get multiple quotes when we get work done, as if any other kind of repair that is done in your home or whatever, one quote is good, two is better, so you can at least decide. Because it leaves us with pain saying, yes, I agree, we're trying to stay in a good relationship, they're doing a good job for our town. I know that. I would never deny that. But I also feel that we have to be fair to the taxpayers we represent and make sure that the dollars that are, we were supposed to get, that we get some kind of value for it. That's all what I care about. That we give them another two-year lease is not here nor there. But I really feel that we need to get an arm-length relationship when it comes to that commercial piece of paper that we entered with.
Counselor Smith?
I think that, I think that line that's there for what the Black Sands group needs to do, or the town needs to do, is so vague. And at this point in time, it seems like the Black Sands has come out ahead every time and the town's, you know, has given in, given in, given in, every time. I mean, like where's the, where does some of the responsibility lie on the, you know, on the Black Sands group?
But now, I need some clarification, council. How can we stand firm with no flexibility when the damage that was done to that hole transpired before they took over? And in, in good faith, they expected, and we expected, Disaster Services to take care of the damage. They deserved a golf course that was fully operational. It was not. It was about 17 and a half holes operational. And I don't agree that the Black Sands group has come out ahead on everything. And councillor Cronin, in terms of you talking about responsibility to the, to the taxpayers, if you go back and look over the red ink...
I re- amended.
Incurd, well, you weren't here. Incurd between '07 and 2010, it's in the neighborhood of possibly a quarter million dollars of, of red ink. In the three years that, well, two and a half years because 2013 is still in progress, there has been no red ink. So our obligation to the taxpayer has been hugely, hugely facilitated and benefited by the fact that there is no red ink in 2011, 2012, and 2013. So let's not choke on $4,000 difference between 16 and 12,000.
It's not the amount, it's a principle. That's all.
But I addressed the principle when I talked about the fact that we have benefited the taxpayer immensely through this lease agreement. The taxpayer is no longer incurring 50, 60, 70, 80,000 or more per year of red ink.
I think we, we might not look at it from the same perspective. I appreciate your perspective.
Quite.
But I also believe that there is, that lease agreement that obligates a town to some responsibility and obligate a group that is a business group to some responsibility. And I really think we need to still look at it that way too. The rest is true. I would not deny any of what you say. I know it to be true.
But what I'm saying is...
Councillor Court?
Okay. This is the point I've been trying to make, that it's like you buy a car, it's got some issues with it, it's got to be fixed. Does the guy that buys it fix it, or the guy that sells it to you fix it? And there, there can be disagreements on that. But once it's fixed, we can move forward. So my point is, okay, it may not be totally not lease agreement, but the costs were not what we thought they'd be either, for them or us.
But it's their responsibility.
So if we can move past, if we can get past 16th hole, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't agree to give them any more money after that. But we need to get this golf course to where it's supposed to be. They were in good faith and they repaired it. We just didn't get the money we thought we were going to get.
Is, is council aware of the proposal that's on the table? Because I would like a motion, which we then can have some follow-up discussion on, okay? The proposal, as I understand it, would be to waive outstanding money owed to us for 2011 and for 2012.
No. No. The recommendation is to waive the lease payment for 2012 and 2013.
12 and 13, okay.
Is that, is that the 32,000 dollar payment?
That's $15,000. Because you've already waived five.
And that would allow them, that they would owe us in the neighborhood of $1,500, $1,600 and change. So the chair is seeking, if a motion is forthcoming...
I'll make that motion.
Councillor Court makes that motion, that we waive lease payments due to the town for 2012 and 2013. That motion is on the table. I'd like discussion on the motion, and after adequate discussion, we'll take, we'll take the motion. Counselor Smith?
Okay. So let's say we waive this year, whatever. I mean, what's the going forward? Where, I mean, where's the, where's the line? What do they do and what do we do? I mean, will they keep coming back to us and asking us for, you know, I mean, so far they've had it for three years and haven't paid the town a penny yet. And the town's paid out. We haven't incurred any red ink over the last two years because we're incurring the red ink right now, and this year.
I, I question that. There is no red ink happening anywhere at all.
Well, because they owe the town this money here, so, right?
For fixing our golf course that was broken before they got it. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Is the, is the irrigation part of that as well?
Well, the irrigation repairs were for 16, but their disaster is saying that the repairs that we did in 2010 were related to the disaster. And if the hill continues to move, it's, it's a separate incident. It's not related to that one incident. So that's why they won't pay it.
So is this money that they're requesting from us, does that include the irrigation or the irrigation as well?
But can I just ask a question regarding that irrigation repair? So that is clearly something the town should have been responsible for on that one?
No. In 2010, when the disaster happened, we did irrigation repairs on hole 16. In 2011, the hill continues to move a little bit, right? Like, we know it does. And so there was additional repairs that were done. So the, I guess the, the line is that the disaster happened in 2010, and the program says, no, we will only fund what happened in 2010, not what continued to move in 2011.
Okay. Counselor Smith?
Then going forward from here, I think that before the, I mean, if there's any more slumpage or, or any more damage on any of the, any of the greens or fairways or anything, that they need to collaborate with the town and specifically, I mean, if they're coming after public funds, then I mean, they better have someone from the town there making sure that they're getting the proper quotes and that everything's coming in.
Well, that's exactly the point.
Everything's correct. Because, I mean, like I say, when, when their quotes are completely different than what Disaster Services is willing to, to go in, they have no documentation for the work that was done.
But let's remember, Disaster Services cut back on our invoice to them as well.
Yeah. But I mean, they need to have the documentation. You can't just, you can't just pull numbers out of the air and say, well, we did this much. You have to have documentation there.
I, I agree with councillor Smith. If I could figure out a way of putting that with the motion, that they would have to collaborate with this going forward, that this doesn't happen again, that they just do the work and submit the bill to us, I'd like to see that somehow, alter my motion.
But administration has already addressed that. Administration has made it very clear to us that in dialogue with the management group, they will not incur any costs which might have some impact back on us without consultation in the process. So I don't know that, I think it's redundant to put a motion. Councillor Cronin?
I just want to offer an observation. When we dealt with a nonprofit organization like the Carrish Theater, and they wanted their taxes waived, which they were allowed to as a nonprofit organization under provincial tradition, we asked them for three-year business records in order to waive a very small amount of money. Here we deal with a business group for which we're going to waive $20,000 with absolutely no request to their financial records. I find it amazing.
Any other comments on the, on the motion? Counselor?
Well, like you say, this has been going on forever. And we didn't start out with a flat plain field when we started. They took it over in good faith that the disaster recovery would cover everything. And now we're finding that they won't. But I don't think that's their fault, and I don't think it's our fault. It's just the way things worked out. And I'd just like to see the thing get settled, to start with a flat plain field, and from now on, we go as for the lease.
Counselor Smith?
And that's, I mean, the reason why we leased it out there was so that the taxpayers wouldn't be on the hook for anything here. I mean, if it comes down to it, and it, and it continues to slump or whatever, then, you know, maybe it needs to go up for sale. I mean, we're trying to eliminate the, you know, the cost of the taxpayer. The golf course will always be there, whether it's leased or whether it's owned, you know, sold privately. So I mean, it's not going anywhere. But the whole purpose of leasing it out was so that the town wouldn't incur those costs anymore. But slumpage keeps coming, and you know, the town keeps incurring the costs, and taxpayers are on the hook for it, then something else needs to be done with that.
Well, and that's a good comment, because it's probably a step in the right direction if town administration sat down with Black Sands management and said, listen, let's have some dialogue in relation to slumpage. So that, and what makes sense to me is some of the lease proceeds go towards slumpage in the future. But again, I emphasize something. Yes?
I just need some clarification around this motion though, because is it the intent of council that if there continues to be some maintenance issues because of the condition of the course, that the town is going to participate? Or am I saying to Black Sands, we're participating at this point? In our opinion, the disaster funding is done, that disaster issue is done. Anything in the future is not the responsibility of the town, unless it's a future incident.
That's the way it is.
I'm just trying to get some clarification.
That's the intent of my motion.
That's what...
The intent of the motion is to deal with the issue at hand.
Yes.
And anything in the future should be something that we probably shouldn't enter into some...
No.
...respective... respective discussions so that we're not to speak on everything.
Well, if there's a future disaster. It is our course. They're leasing it, but it is our course. So if I was renting my house out, and a windstorm came and blew all the shingles off of the rental house, I'd be responsible for those shingles. So future disasters are something else we'd have to deal with.
This is not a triple net lease where the occupant pays everything, every penny of maintenance. It's our course they're managing for us. We're not in the golf business where we intend to generate revenue from the golf course. We provide a service, whether it's a swimming pool, whether it's an ice rink, whether it's ballparks, whether it's a golf course, whether it's an agronome. We provide as a municipality various services for the citizens of this town. Our swimming pool incurs an operating loss annually. Our ice rink incurs an operating loss annually. The taxpayers suck those up.
But those are not private businesses at this point.
Well, but it's still our golf course. Okay, I'm gonna call a question. Do you under, does everyone understand the question?
What was the, can you just read the motion?
Looked by Counselor Court to waive the lease payments of the Black Sands Management Group for 2012 and 2013 in the amount of 15,000.
Okay.
All right, just want, I just want to make sure there's something in place for, for future...
But, but administration has fairly stated...
This, yeah, this just deals, we're solving with that.
Counselor Smith made the comment about selling it. That, that may be an option, but I think that's for another council to decide, not for us right now.
No, yeah, but I mean, that, that of what the citizens ever have them to pay in that nickel into the course. Like I say, it'll always be there, it's always gonna be run by somebody, and they have to rely on the market, on, you know, on who's gonna golf there. The prices are too high, obviously, they're not gonna get anyone.
Okay, so back to the motion at hand. I will call a question relative to waiving leases owing for, lease amounts owing for 2012 and 13 to the town for the Black Sands Management Group. All in favor of the motion to waive those lease fees? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Lively discussion, part of the democratic process. Mr. Schaefer, the issue of the tree. Counselor Creed, would you like to speak to how the beautification committee and Counselor Crone was there?
Right, okay. Mr. Schaefer did come to our Communities in Bloom meeting, you know, expressed his concerns with the tree. Marion had also surveyed all of the other businesses on Main Street to see if any of them had concerns with trees. I don't believe there was any other concern with, with the trees. Mr. Schaefer did say he would pay for all of the costs and put in another tree. He talked about the possibility of, you know, thinning the tree. In, in, in the end, it came down to if, if, if he feels adamant that the, that the tree is a detriment, that we would concede, you know, to removing the tree. That was the recommendation from the Communities in Bloom, that if that was, you know, he was adamant on that, we would concede to him for that, hoping that that doesn't become a domino effect on Main Street. That, that was our final resolution, that if he was insistent on it, and he was willing to pay the cost, we would make that recommendation to counsel.
Okay, so, so we have the offer to pay for the cost of removing the tree. And if I understand it correctly, there's also reference to the fact that another tree would be bought and, at our discretion, relocated or located someplace else in, in the community.
That's my understanding.
Would you, Counselor, or Counselor Creed, or Counselor Crone, would you like to make the motion that you feel appropriate on this issue?
And I will put the motion forward that the tree, on account of Mr. Schaefer's property, be removed according to beautification recommendation.
And replaced with...
And replaced with a new tree to be located in the community.
At his cost. Okay. Any discussion on the motion, counsel?
Has he agreed to replacing the tree?
We told him that I was, we wanted it replaced, but we don't have any writing.
Yeah, in my discussions with Jim, he has said that he would pay for the cost of the repair to the sidewalk and whatever needed to be done there to remove the tree, and pay for the cost of the new tree. So, but if that's the intent of the motion, I would like it to be clear in the motion that that is, that is what we did.
Okay, so we're, we're clear on that?
All costs plus a new tree.
Installed at his cost. Right, and we determined where that will go. Any other comments or questions, counsel?
I have a comment.
Yeah?
The tree was there before he put his sign up. And this is not the first time the citizens has complained about where something was after he built his, built his house or something, whatever. And it bothers me that people don't come to us before they do something, and then they come to counsel and say, well, we want relief, or we want this, or we want that. Let's do things upfront, and rather than second-handed. Good comment, thank you.
But too much being what they are.
But his business and the building were there before the tree. The sign wasn't. He's trying to improve his business by putting a sign up. The tree's in the way. I mean, I don't know where else he'd put his sign.
I, I'm guessing that this new style of signage, digital, it's all cleared the appropriate zoning regulations through those, okay? So we have a motion on...
I have one more comment. Going north, or going south, you can see the sign quite well.
It's coming the other way.
Going north, or go, eh, going north, you can't see the sign because the tree's in the, I've driven past it two or three times just to check it out. And, as I say, going south is not intrusive at all, but going north is a little harder to see the sign.
And only when the tree is in leaf.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if he's depending on the, on the tree, the sign to promote his business, I don't think it'll help very much.
Okay, so I will call a question. The motion is then that the property owner will pay for the removal of the tree, will pay for repair to the sidewalk, will pay for another tree to be installed in, in the community. All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we have, and I guess I would just a little bit unclear, 6C. Marion, what do we need to do to...
I think it's just...
That's just a copy of our county, the letter that's on the county.
Correct. A letter was sent by Alberta Human Services to the county regarding the FCSS funding. In addition to that, the county has contacted us and asked that we have a representative at their September night's meeting to discuss the benefits of the FCSS program to the county. So we will be attending that meeting.
Now, counsel.
Marion, if I understand, that, that letter from the province is really there to say, to the county, pay up?
Correct.
Now, 6D, do we have anything further on that one? I see a Lexus instance.
On my Lexus.
Okay, so, I think we're right on schedule, because we're just a couple of minutes away from the public hearing, and that coincides with 6E regarding the, the bylaw 1620, Garbage and Recycling bylaw. I would like a motion to convene to public hearing, please. Counselor. Counselor Court moved to convene to public hearing. All in favor of we convene to public hearing? Counselor Court, I happen to see his language at first. So now, let the record show that we have convened counsel to the public hearing regarding bylaw 1620, the garbage and recycling bylaw, and Marion will give us an introductory information on that.
Yes, the public hearing, as you said, your worship, is for bylaw 1620, a bylaw of the Towne Carters in the Province of Alberta to provide for the orderly collection, removal, and disposal of garbage and recycling. What I'm going to do is just highlight for you some of the changes from our previous bylaw, which was bylaw 1579, which will be rescinded upon approval of third reading of this bylaw, if counsel so chooses. So one of the first major changes we made was just in the definitions. What we tried to do was clarify the intent of the previous bylaw in the definitions when it comes to what is a garbage receptacle, what is refuse, those types of things. So there was a number of changes made in there. I just want to draw your attention to, under two, there's a word change that needs to be made in there. It says, "The bylaw applies to all refuse produced within the bounds of the town, except as otherwise provided in this bylaw. The town shall provide for the public collection and removal of waste within, within the limits of the," and it says "city," and that word should read "town." Another change we made was in regards to garbage receptacles, and "The occupant of a residential premise shall place waste receptacles for collection in such a way that collectors shall have access without the necessity of entering into private property unless permission has previously been granted by the owner." We just added that clause. It's been practiced in the past, but we wanted to ensure that that was clear. It is not the intent of our garbage collector to go onto private property to collect refuse. The next was, "No single residence shall have more than four refuse receptacles or combination of receptacles and/or bundles at the curb for regular pickup unless a $2 over limit tag is on each receptacle or bundle over this limit. These tags can be purchased at the Carters and Town Hall." That was in addition to the bylaw, to, for a couple of purposes. One was to encourage recycling. One of the goals of counsel has been to enhance our recycling program. And the second goal of that was to try to eliminate or reduce the amount of waste that is going to the landfill. As you're aware, the landfill is, has faced an overage charge on an annual basis, and so we're looking at all types of opportunities to try to reduce that waste. So that was the purpose of that. It's very standard in other communities around the area that we looked at. It's becoming more and more common. The next item that I'd like to point out is talking about the owner of premises using commercial, commercial waste bins. And again, we just tried to clarify in there what is an acceptable storage location, and outlined that it must be located in a location that will allow for safe and efficient collection and vehicle access. It's an area that we've had some difficulties with in the past, and enforcement in the commercial areas where perhaps Darcy can't get to the bins or the garbage is put out in an unacceptable manner. So we've just tried to address that within the bylaw. The next item that is one of the major changes is that the collection agent will be supplied with non-acceptable trash tags that will be put on any containers that are left for pickup until it comply. So that's just so that the residents understand why it wasn't picked up, and there's some criteria on there of, you know, whether it's too heavy or yard material or whatever. Then, under number six, we also tried to clarify some of the refuse that we won't collect. And in the previous bylaw, there was a number of things listed that we tried to be a little more comprehensive in this. We added highly combustible or explosive materials. We added hot ashes, compressed gas, toxic or household hazardous waste, biomedical waste, electronic equipment, including micros, TVs, those types of things, and paints and solvents. So those were some of the major changes there. In clause eight, we also added the construction and demolition portion of the bylaw to deal with waste that is happening because of construction or demolition, and ensuring that any property that is, well, I'll read it to you. "A person carrying out the construction, demolition, or alteration of buildings or other building operations on any property shall do so in such a manner as to not permit building material or building waste material to remain loose, free, or uncontrolled on the property." And then it goes on to talk about the responsibility of the contractor for that. And I believe, your worship, that that is all of the major changes. Just to point out, there is no intent in this bylaw to change the fees. We have looked at the operating cost, our projections over the next two years, as we will still be in a profit position of between $6,000 and $7,000 in our, in our garbage, which will allow us then not to have to do an increase in our, in our garbage rates. One of the things, though, that counsel has talked about is having the curbside pickup bins. And if that is the case, and we move forward with that, there will be some increased costs for those. We've worked on a few projections, but at this point, I didn't get into too much detail with it because I didn't think that counsel was prepared to make that decision immediately, and that it's probably something that a future counsel would discuss a little further.
Okay, thanks, Marion. I'll take two comments, Counselor Crone and the Counselor Court, and then we'll go to the presenters, that we got about three presenters.
Marion, I just wanted to ask you, under number six, "The town shall not remove the following from premises." Are we still going to have the yearly pickup of trash?
Yes.
Because it doesn't speak about that at all anywhere.
Right. Our annual cleanup week, or pickup week, is outside of our normal garbage collection and would not be addressed in the bylaw.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we, we've had...
The intent is that we would continue to do that, but it's not part of the bylaw.
Okay, thanks.
Just a clarification, I think I already know the answer. When you talk about receptacle, you're just talking about a garbage barrel. It may have two or three little small white bags, and then we're not talking about bags here.
Yeah.
So you could have six bags and four receptacles, and that's perfectly acceptable, okay?
Yeah, same story, yeah. It's, it's a receptacle waste bin or waste collection cart.
And that's 45 pounds, right?
Okay, counselor...
Forty pounds, forty pounds, maximum.
Counselor, and notice the typos. Number 10, your paints and solvents. Alberta paint recycling.
Alberta paint recycling?
You recycle, you're gonna be in pain.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Creed, do you have a comment?
I just had a question for Marion. Under number six, DI66, compressed gas propane retainer cylinders, is it contemplated that would include the little soldering torch or the Coleman lantern cylinders?
Yes, the intent is that we would pick those up.
Okay. So I'm wondering what, what is available, you know, like, when, when we restrict things, we've got to have something else in place for them.
We've talked with the county about having, alternating an annual toxic roundup event, and, but there's also opportunity to take those out. I believe they just set them off to the side at the transfer station, counsel?
I know they have the big, they have some big tanks out there.
I have the big one.
And there is, there is a location in Lethbridge that those types of materials can be dropped off.
Yeah, at the land shore.
It's very, it's very difficult for a municipality of our size to have all of those facilities available immediately. So we've looked at opportunities that we can do that with the toxic roundup and some of those.
Okay, Counselor.
Marion, I just want to address one issue. I understand that in town, they will no longer pick up the plastics that are being recycled. The company that we had, BFI or whatever, no longer will pick up the plastics. So that means that those plastics are not going to go in a garbage basket.
Potentially.
Or that people will go to Lethbridge and dispose of them. Or that people will go to Lethbridge and dispose of them there, which tells me that most likely it's going to go. So that's going to increase the volume, not the weight so much, but the volume of those garbage bags, right?
Yeah. One of the things, Counselor, that, and your council's aware of this, but we're looking at the best practices study with the Solid Waste Authority, and I'm hoping that some of those issues will be addressed in that study because it's not just something that the town of Carts and is facing.
Correct.
It's many municipalities.
Yes, I agree with you.
So let me just ask a question that you brought it up because I did want to ask. Is there any status report on where that best practice is?
Well, there is, and it is in your packet. The funding is another one?
We haven't received word on the funding. The one in the package is on the shared service.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry.
We have not received word on the funding yet, and that project can't move forward until we have that.
Thank you, Marion. For the purposes of our public hearing, we have three individuals who have requested to be heard, and I'll take them in this order. Mrs. Fox, Mr. Barkis, and Ms. Wood, so if you'd like to take your place up for you. We want to try to make sure that you limit it to ten minutes and break it down into a five-minute presentation, only if you need it, and then a couple of minutes after that for questions, if they're needed as well. Okay?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for this opportunity. You come and speak to council and to yourself. In a world where families seem to be constantly under attack and those of us having large families, mind you, mine is grown, have been under attack, we feel that, I feel, that this bylaw seems to be punitive and a tax grab against those of larger families. Those families pay taxes just the same as everybody pays taxes in town. I agree that there is a necessity for the bylaw. I have seen some of the things that our bylaw officer has to collect, and occasionally he's had some horror stories at my house. It definitely needs to be addressed. Whereas a limit of four receptacles per household seems on the large scale to look like it's great, it does not encourage anyone with a small family to recycle or to look after their waste or to reduce. If you only have two individuals living in a house and you have four receptacles, you can just throw it in when you want it. It's not going to be a problem. If you have eight to ten individuals in your house and you only have four receptacles, you're already reducing, well, a lot of the families that I know are already reducing. To take it down even further gets to be a difficult situation. I would suggest to council that a more equitable way of dealing with the goal of garbage reduction and recycling in town might be a one-bag-per-person limit per week. So instead of per household having four receptacles, if there was only one individual in that household, they would be allowed one receptacle. If there were ten individuals in that household, I'm not suggesting a full ten receptacles, but a larger number for that household. Logistically, someone said, "Well, that's a nightmare. How do you do it? How can you keep track?" Nowadays, with iPads and computers and everything else, if a household is registered with the town as having ten individuals in their household, it would be easy to load that on a map on an iPad to have our collection agent be able to know that, okay, this household's allowed more garbage. I feel it would be more equitable across the board to take it per person stand instead of per household stand and to look at supporting large families instead of punishing them or making them pay more for continuing their families or having their families in our I understand what other communities are doing and the stands they take, but a lot of our other communities aren't family-friendly, and I would like to see Carts and be a family-friendly place and somewhere where large families want to be to raise their families and feel that it's a good place. The only other thing I could say is, I guess, one of the logistics to doing this would be knowing how many people were in a household, and I would put that onus on the homeowner to register with town anything about one person. If you have one person in the household, you don't have to come register in town. You automatically get your one receptacle pickup. If you have more than one person living in your household, you need to register and say, "This is how many people we have living in town," and that that should be redone every few years. And if they should miss the registration period, that there would be a nominal fee to re-register their household.
Okay, Counselor Cork?
I have a few questions for you. When you said back, "Do you mean bagger, do you mean garbage can?"
A receptacle.
Receptacle. And...
I just need to clarify Counselor Cork's question before. The intent of the bylaw is that it would be four bags, but that's not four garbage containers, okay? The refuse receptacle and the refuse container are two different things. The receptacle is the bag.
That, that's a problem that I would like to address as well.
I just wanted to clarify.
I use the little white bags because they fit under my sink, so I have four little bags that weigh ten pounds, and I have the fifth bag. Am I gonna get ticketed? That's my question.
I'm thinking in your case, wouldn't you just slide those into one large bag?
Well, if we're talking about best practices and try not to put, that means I'd have to bag a plastic bag with another plastic bag. Doesn't make sense to me. If I can put two of those little bags in a garbage can, it's not a problem. But back to Mrs. Fox, I raised a fairly good-sized family, not as big as a lot of yours, but I don't think I ever came close to anywhere to a hundred and sixty pounds of garbage, even all those years my kids were little. And you talked about family-oriented and one person, one bag. My family's about fifteen now, and they come home quite frequently on weekends and holidays and that, and so I might even be stuck with one bag and fifteen kids trying to stuff everything in there at Christmas time and that. You see the problem that this one-bag thing might cause?
Okay. Whereas we were discussing having, or council has discussed, having tags that you can purchase, when you have people that you know are coming home for a holiday, this is not a constant thing. This is not every day that you have fifteen people in your household, you would be required to have some purchase tags to put on the excess garbage of that one occasion.
So I would tell them they don't get a Christmas present this year because it's one in the garbage bag.
That's your option. I mean, I have the same situation.
It's not very family-friendly, I don't think.
If my family comes home for Christmas, I'm looking at twenty-four people. So if I would have to, I would still be required to get tags for the extra bags. That's part of the extra. I'm saying for the families living in town who are here all the time, who have young children who they're trying to raise, who have to deal with diapers, who have to deal with all the problems that young children have, I feel that the four-bag limit is too tight for them and that we need to look at how many people are living in that household on a regular basis, not visiting, not the extra things that happen in town, but on a regular basis, those who are living there.
Did you have the next question? And then Counselor Rock?
Yeah. Going back to Counselor Cork, a point, to me, four bags at forty pounds is still a hundred and sixty pounds of refuse for one week. It seems to me so much. If you are recycling-minded, you take away the metal, you take away the cardboard, you take away the plastic, and you really live inside there, I mean, some make compost, some don't, but you can't even put it with your green clipping and that can go to the green disposal. You really don't have much garbage left. I do that, and we do, fair enough, we have people coming in and out. But honestly, I have one bag of garbage every two or three weeks. That's all what I put at the curb.
Well, what I'm saying is, the way this is written, you are responsible, you have reduced, but there are citizens who are not going to reduce, but...
I see what you're trying to say.
They can simply, without anything they want, not do anything.
Well, I just came back from Belgium for five years. Every household was allowed one bag. Any excess bag, they were clear plastic, anything recyclable inside there, the bag was left at your door with a tag, "Remove your recyclable." You couldn't have none of that. They wouldn't pick it up. So that's what I'm used to, which was even more drastic than what we have here. It takes a little bit of education, but I think the future of landfill is something we need to seriously consider. And we are, what, fourteen communities or something like that, sharing that landfill. If we don't start to, all start to have a best practice in management of waste, the landfill can't last forever.
Okay, the next question, and that's probably the end of our time.
I think it's important that we continue to make things more difficult and harder for the citizens of our town, and if we do that, we'll have more abuses and more objections and whatever. We're gonna swallow, swallow a camel and choke it in that.
But education is important then in that matter. We got to educate at a very young age, in B.C., starting kindergarten.
We're not B.C.
Well, maybe it's a best practice there.
Thank you, Barb. And next presenter up is Mr. Barkis.
I won't take much of your time. Thank you. My understanding of the bylaw is basically this, trying to encourage us to reduce is really what it boils down to. And I have no problems with that. My family, we've worked hard to do that, and most weeks, like Counselor Cohen put out, even with my family and all my teenage boys and all the garbage that they're capable of creating in our home, one or two bags is most that we usually are looking at throwing out. But we do have weeks where we'll go through and be doing a major cleanout, and now we've got four, five, or six bags. And it seems a little bit unfair that a family that goes to work to keep down to one or two bags all year long suddenly is, for one weekend, stuck having to go buy some tags because they're, for one week, they're a couple of bags over. And so that's really the only concern that I saw that came as I went through it.
Okay. In Belgium, to remedy to that very problem, every owner, every household was given twelve ex-briollo tag for the year that they could use whenever they wanted.
And that something like that would address the issue, yeah. And that's what I'm saying, is it's something that I think is probably fairly easily addressable, but I didn't see any mechanism to address that kind of thing. Kind of go along with your talk about a little bit with excess. I see this as a problem as well. We're in a rural community, over half the people own a pickup truck. If they got too much garbage, they haul out there themselves, and we're not solving the problem of the landfill problem because we'll just haul it out ourselves so we don't get ticketed by the town. Or it'll go into a commercial bin, which I've seen happen, the bin behind my office a lot of times.
Hopefully, as we recycle in our homes, every couple of weeks, we're gonna make a trip to the recycling trailer, and you probably noticed the recycling trailer...
What trailer would that be?
Yeah.
It's in place.
The trailer that somebody decided to torch has been replaced at an expense to the tax for about sixteen thousand dollars. But the recycling does require that someone go to the recycling trailer, and that's a perfect time to take that extra bag or two to the transfer station as you stop by the trailer and deposit your glass or your cardboard or your newsprint. So that's kind of my response. And by the way, I'm with you. I have those times when I've got six bags. And so my solution is whichever ones of those six bags don't smell, they wait until I've got time to throw them in my trunk or in my pickup truck and go to the transfer station, possibly when I'm taking my yard clippings and so forth. And because of the new bylaw, where we're not picking up grass and yard clippings and things like that, we do, we have to go. And so now we've got two or three good reasons to go. We've got maybe an extra bag to take up to the transfer station. We've got our yard clippings if we're not composting them, and we've got a recycling to drop at the trailer. So this is a nice outing for Mom and Pom and the kids, and they get to participate in this recycling process.
I guess the question that was brought up there as far as, you know, just throwing the back of our pickup trucks and running up to the transfer station, is that gonna, is this bylaw going to fix the problem that we're trying to fix of encouraging people to reduce? I don't know the answer to that.
Good question.
Counselor?
I guess the other thing is to live next to a neighbor that only has one bag a week and ask if you can put your extra one there.
So now I've gotta sell my house and move too, eh? I rethink all this proper reduction. Only way it's gonna happen is if it hits people in the pocketbook. And I'm not in favor of charging people extra to go out to the transfer station because I love their mortgage. And really, I think your point is well-taken. What's, how can we encourage them without hitting them too hard in the pocketbook? I don't know if there is a way. Education's a good way. You talked about that. Yeah, I don't want to imply that, for most people, I don't think a $2 tag is gonna be a huge financial burden to most people. But it will be something that ticks people off if they put out that extra bag out there and it gets left there, and it happens to be the smelly bag that gets left there. I mean, it just...
The one with the diapers?
Or the one that the dogs decide to spread all over the country because it's not inside of a bin or something. I mean, there's, that's kind of where my, it's not, it's not the two or four or six or ten dollars a year that it might cost me extra. It's the hassle and the frustration that they develop.
One of the things that we do when we increase water rates, that's one of the methods that encourages people to be more responsible and use less water. And I kind of agree with Counselor Cork, as much as we don't like to hit people in the pocketbooks, it is an incentive to recycle and, you know, and education is always a good idea. But again, it typically takes people to be hitting the pocketbooks to make a serious effort. I needed a ticket for no seatbelt to help remind me, "I don't want any more tickets for no seatbelt." So I buckle up my seatbelt quite religiously, Counselor.
Just a clarification, I'm not supporting extra costs on the garbage. Problem is, is try that with their gas, go to B.C., L45 liter. I don't think it's solving their problems over there. I don't think that will solve the problem.
If you assess a fee, who's gonna collect it and how they're gonna do it? And if you have, if you have three garbage bags instead of two, is the garbage clerk gonna leave one bag at your doorstep?
Well, and, yeah, so...
Let's be reasonable.
So, thanks, Ron. Ms. Wood, if you'd like to come up, please.
No, I didn't know we changed to four bags per household. I thought it was two.
No, it's, the proposal is for four.
Four, okay.
Maximum weight of forty pounds per bag.
So that's a hundred and sixty pounds. Okay, well, I'm just pretty much gonna read this because I don't want to get anything. I have two objections. One is the collection of yard waste and the four bags per household rule. I want a few in my neighborhood who takes care of their yards, mowing, mowing, trimming bushes, et cetera. I have such a large yard that after a good cleanup day, I may have six or more bags of garbage. On this, I'm a single woman with a small car. I don't have access to a truck, and I don't have room in my small car for six bags of garbage and hard yard, one bags of garbage in the backseat of my car where people have to sit. Sometimes I wouldn't even be able to get these bags into my car. I have a degenerate disc in my back, so if, for example, I spend the day edging my lawn, which includes big humps of dirt in the trash, it's all I can do to pull the garbage to the curb. There's no way I could lift them into my car. Whereas for a strong garbage man, it would be no problem. The only solution of this bylaw that I can see is for me to stop taking care of my yard. In fact, I have already seen the yard of another single lady in my area used to rake the lawn, trimming, sort her yard out nice, and she hasn't been doing it anymore. The second objection I have affects, only affects me indirectly. Four bags per household rule, okay, extra with permission for the extra bags. As I've already mentioned there, it's just me at home, and I recycle everything I possibly can, and I still come up with a bag of, about a bag of garbage a week. I can't possibly... I can't possibly imagine how some of these families with 10 kids can only have four bags of garbage, especially when two or three of these kids may still be in diapers, and most of these large families are not wealthy enough to pay $2 for each bag. Now to how I see this affecting me. In my neighborhood, we have a household that consists of a single mother and five teenage boys. Every couple of weeks or so, they put out a huge amount of garbage. Because of previous experience with this family, if only four bags of trash are collected, I foresee the rest of the bags will sit there, and the dogs and the crows will get into them and tear them apart, leaving trash scattered around. This has happened before, if they are too late in getting the trash out before collection. So what I see in the future is definitely not the beautification of this town, as we are so often asked to do, exactly the opposite. I can't tolerate some garbage everywhere.
Okay, so is that your period exclamation mark? Okay, thank you. Counselors, any comments or questions?
Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I think that just about wraps up the public hearing. Any further discussion or comments from Counsel, Counselor Corwin?
What about Mr. Pevoi?
I don't know if he was asked for a...
No.
Just one clarification from, from Marion. When Counselor Corwin was asking about the four bags, or is it four bags or four receptacles, or a combination of four bags and four receptacles?
Just the definitions, if you read the definitions in the bylaw, sorry, I'll just pull it out here. The garbage receptacle is a container, and the refuse receptacle is a tied plastic bag. And then the four limit is referring to the refuse receptacle, which is the bag.
Okay, well, then my question is, is what about the, the garbage, the garbage cans? Can you have more garbage cans? No, this, this, this is what I didn't understand in that definition.
My, my suggestion would be that if your bags fit into one container...
Yeah.
Then the one container would be fine. If you have four bags and they fit into two containers, it would be fine. But the, the point is, the, I guess that you'd have to be concerned about is the 40 pounds maximum, right? So, you know, you might have four bags that weigh 40 pounds, which might mean you need four cans.
Well, so you could have up to four cans.
As long as it's...
And whatever, whatever would fit in those cans would, would work the same as for either...
And if I might, just for clarification, this came from work with our garbage contractor, our bylaw officer, and other individuals that, that have had input into this. It's not just simply we, we pulled a number out of the air, right? It is a difficult thing. I understand what, what's been presented here today, because it, it can be confusing.
But, so, so can I just get the clarification that it would be either four bags, four garbage cans, or a combination of garbage cans and bags?
The, the bylaw states four refuse receptacles.
Right.
So if you have more than four bags, it potentially would be left behind, because that's the definition of the refuse receptacle.
Even if they were in, in garbage cans? I mean, that's why I don't understand if you're gonna count the, count the bags in, in the garbage can.
The way the bylaw's currently written, it says refuse receptacle, which is considered to be a bag, so maximum four.
Okay.
None of which can exceed 40 pounds.
I've had a little trouble.
Marion? Can you just refresh my memory? In your definition, is the word bags used anywhere?
It says refuse receptacle is defined as, or shall mean, tied plastic garbage bags in which refuse is to be deposited or placed. That's the definition.
And then the weight, the 40 pound is somewhere, no, I read it.
Yeah, the 40 pound weight limit is...
Should we add it there? Should we add it into that very definition, since that is really what we're looking at? That a refuse receptacle is a tied bag with trash not weighing more than 40 pounds? So that maybe it will explain a little bit better? If, if we all seem to be confused, then we need to fix it.
And Counselor Corwin has a comment?
This is just a, I can understand the 40 pound weight limit. I can't understand why if I got two or three little white bags in a garbage can that weigh 20 pounds, I'm gonna get ticketed for it. I can totally understand the 40 pound weight limit. The, the, the garbage person's gonna take that garbage can and dump it in the garbage truck, and there might be three bags fall out of there. So all of a sudden, I'm gonna get a visit with the bylaw officer, you know what I'm saying? I, I know the, the weight limit's more of a concern to me than the number of bags in a, in a garbage can, so...
Yeah, is that, the bylaw addresses the, the weight in, doesn't address a weight per se as loose waste. It addresses the waste in a bag. So maybe that is where the difficulty lies.
So Counselor, is, is there some legitimacy that we revisit this contextual situation where if you've got four white bags in a receptacle and...
That weigh 15 pounds.
...the maximum weight is under 40 pounds, do we have a problem with that by definition in the bylaw?
Yeah, I see what, what you're saying, so...
A comment, Marion?
I was just gonna say, if, if the four refuse receptacles is the issue that I'm hearing here, that's just one clause that can be removed from the bylaw by way of motion once we reconvene to counsel. The intent of that was to try to reduce and limit the amount that's going into the, you know, and encourage recycling, as I said.
Essentially, how it's, how it is packaged, that's the issue.
Yes, because I could use, I could use a lawn bag and get 35 pounds in there, it's only one bag. Whereas I use three little ones that weighs 15 pounds, I mean, there's...
Okay, then Counselor Dow.
We're getting so convoluted, nobody in the wide, wide world even understands what our garbage law is. I think we should follow the KISS principle, keep it simple, stupid.
Okay. Now, the Chair will honor some time for Mr. Pevoi. I believe you're here as representative of the Chamber of Commerce.
With the Chamber, yes, thank you. I realize we didn't get on the docket in time, because we didn't have our meeting until after the deadline. But it did come up, the idea of the garbage bylaw came up in the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting, and some concern was expressed, simply that if the public were, you know, imposed with, you know, a limitation, that the businesses of Main Street would find a lot more, you know, residential garbage ending up in those bins. And so, I mean, to that effect, we just wrote a simple letter, just pointing out, not trying to sway you either way, just trying to point out that that was a concern of the business sector, that specifically that if residential garbage ends up in our dumpsters, hey, even if there's room, we wouldn't care. But it incentivizes, you know, kind of the, the people that wander the streets looking for cans and bottles to rummage a little deeper, a little more thoroughly, because there's a little more incentive maybe, because, you know, there's more in people's garbage now, and that would create, you know, kind of a mess. Every time that happens, you know, with, with South Katrina, it spills over, and then it's rolling down the parking lot. So, that was a concern expressed in the board meeting. Again, no decisions were made other than to call to your attention that that was a concern, and then encouraging you guys to take that into consideration as you make your so.
Valid concern, Bill.
So I'll leave this, I've just got a copy of that.
Comments or questions on Mr. Pevoi's concern from the Chamber?
Marion, correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like there was a clause in there that prohibits people from dumping residential garbage into commercial garbage receptacles. I mean, that doesn't mean that they won't do it, but it is, there is a restriction there on...
Yeah. And then there always has been in our bylaw, and maybe I should just clarify one other thing, because it's come up a couple times. The, the yard waste and the grass clippings, that has always been in the bylaw. That's not a change to this bylaw.
Just an enforcement of the existing bylaw.
We have just started to enforce it, so it's, it's sort of on the...
Yeah.
Okay, I think, Bill, I think we're good, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me see if I can get a handle on where we're at with this. We've had three or four people visit with us, taking their time, and thanking you very much for your time, always need to listen. We've got two or three issues we need to look at. The one that's been raised between, is a receptacle with five bags that weigh only 35 pounds, is that acceptable, and things like that? Because we need to determine where we're gonna go before the Chair entertains a motion for third reading. I mean, we can have a motion for third reading if we clean up that little issue, if we take that out, or we can put it off for, till next meeting, and have the revised bylaw come to us for that third reading.
Have we, have we discussed with other municipalities what they do, or is this kind of a template of what the other municipalities do with their garbage collection program?
Yeah, I researched a number of municipalities, from the city of Lethbridge to some of the smaller municipalities similar to our size. And as I said earlier, it, it's starting to become more of a, of a trend within the bylaws, that there is limitations. It's not in all bylaws by any means, but...
Yeah, well, that's the thing, I mean, yeah, I mean, limitations are great, but I mean, I mean, that, you know, everyone that spoke, you know, raised some pretty valid points there, perhaps, but I thought there was...
Okay, can I, can I have a motion to reconvene to counsel? Move to reconvene to counsel in favor? Okay, so we have before us the issue of third reading. Now, there's a couple of ways that the Chair can go. The Chair can entertain a motion for third reading, the Chair can entertain a motion to table third reading pending some changes, or maybe a conditional acceptance of third reading. What would be the best for administration to, to get from counsel?
If counsel wants to make a major change to the bylaw that has been presented, you will require a resolution to make that change, and then it can go to third reading. But you do have to have the motion to whatever that changes. So if it's to remove the clause regarding four limitation, then that needs to be a separate motion. If you want to proceed as the bylaw was presented with those minor spelling changes, then you can go to third reading.
Counselor Corwin?
I, listening to all those different people, I really wondered if the issue of the number of bags, when they have extra people or whatever, is really something that needs to be remedied? Should we look again at something that is a practice in Europe, for example, to have citizens have a dozen of extra sticker for those weeks when they have extra bags?
But I think, I think we have...
And that is, and after that, they have to pay.
I think we have provision for that.
Which way?
Well, by, by going and purchasing a couple of tags.
Yeah, but those are free, you see?
Twelve would be free.
Twelve of them are free, which is one extra per month, if you want. And after that, they have to pay.
Does that, does that solve the objectives of this bylaw?
Well, I think maybe what it does, it creates a transition period of adaptation to new rules.
Okay, that's actually a, a comment with love and merit.
Counselor Dow.
If you're going to assess a fee for an extra bag or whatever, you better devise a way to collect that fee.
But, but no, you don't, you mustn't understand.
No, so we'll have to try and pick it up.
If there's going to be a fee, you come to the town office, and you buy your tags and pay for those tags at that time, and so you have tags. Now, I, I think there is merit in a handful, maybe six or eight, free, to get people used to the fact that if I'm over my four, I get a grace period for implementation and such.
It would be all right.
And so that sounds like it's got some merit. Do we want to address that by way of resolution? And that resolution would be by way of motion.
Well, I'm, I'm ready to put something forward, that as a transitional system of garbage disposal, it would allow citizens to have, to be six extra.
And give them free tags. Marion?
Just a comment, I guess, is if we anticipate that this four-bag clause is going to be an administrative or bylaw enforcement nightmare, then my recommendation would be that we remove it. But if counsel's ultimate goal is to reduce and reuse and recycle in the community, then we need to, at some point, determine how we're going to do that. And maybe by implementing the bag limit now is premature, and maybe we start an education process, saying, in 2015, you're only gonna be allowed three bags or four bags, so you better get with the program now.
Now, that's, now that's got some merit, so let's take some comments here, and then it's in some direction here, so we know we're going.
Counselor Dow.
One thing we've got to do is we're changing the garbage idea. We've got to convince 1,100 households of what we want them to do relative to recycle whatever, and, and train them to do what we want them to do. And it's a, it's a massive undertaking.
Okay, if I could, I'd like to ask our contractor, there's always been a prohibition in terms of your having to pick up yard waste. Now, we've put out an education flyer, and it's been on some, probably the website and so forth. Has that improved that situation, because we're, we're in the summer where there's gonna be clippings and yard waste? Has that improved?
Appreciate your opportunity to address some of those questions.
We just love to look at your shorts in here.
Five minutes. I'll look that up, no, the only one in shorts. Yes, it has greatly reduced the amount that has been going to the landfill. I haven't heard too many people complain about having to deal with either mulching their grass now, or composting it in their backyards, which a lot of people have fairly yard, large yards, and can find a spot to do that, or to haul it out. And like you say, sometimes, you know, wow, I got rid of this pile of stuff that was sitting there for two weeks, I had to take my grass out, so I threw that in, and out to the transfer station I went.
Okay, so, so let's, thanks, Darcy. So there's been some improvement in the yard waste that you, that you found on curbs. Now, have you been hard-nosed and just not picked it up?
I have given some people some grace. We're, we're in a tight, tough situation in this community, whereas we have a lot of elderly people as well. And I do understand that some are, you know, might be difficult for them to take care of a bag of grass that their grandson mowed and left on the, to haul. And I have taken it, and I understand that it could raise a problem where, as a neighbor sees that I hauled her grass, why am I not gonna haul hers? But, no, I have had the stickers that the town supplied to me, and I have taken it, or put the sticker on the grass bags and left in there. I don't know how many people have phoned into the town saying, I got this sticker saying, I don't, you don't haul grass anymore, what am I gonna do? But, no, and only a few short weeks, I see hardly anybody throws grass out anymore.
Okay, good, thank you very much. So counsel, do you want us to have an implementation period of the, the limit, and is, is four bags a good target for January the first?
Which size of bag?
There we go.
Which size of bag? You want one of my big plastic bags, or one of them in courts?
Plastic bag.
A little plastic bag. You've got a definition here that's a problem.
As long as it's under 40 pounds.
It seems redundant to me that I'm gonna have to put little white bags in the big green bags, so I can stand there four bags. And I'm not eating bags, they're gonna be stuffed into four green bags. I'm, I'm just not following the, the logic in that at all.
But if you read in 1D where it says garbage receptacle, waste bin, waste collection cart shall mean a container designed to hold refuse receptacles. Plastic bags are refuse receptacles.
Marion said four refuse receptacles is all we're allowed, according to this bylaw, is that correct?
Yeah. If you, if you read down where the limitation is, the four bags, or the, it's on 3A5, no resident shall have more than four refuse receptacles.
Yeah, but how big is that receptacle?
So we need to clean that up just a little bit.
Forty pounds. Fourty pounds.
Why don't we just go to a bin system, where everybody has a steam bin, dump it in, and that's what...
So Marion, walk me through then the administrative process.
What the heck? I'm in counsel.
Now, where's our dog?
That was a good answer.
Because, because let's get, let's get through this, I've got only about another hour, I guess, I've only got about another hour, so...
It's not very...
Counselor Greed?
Well, yeah, obviously, there's, there's some confusion there between, you know, even though it's, it's defined receptacle and refuse, was it, refuse receptacle and garbage receptacle? receptacle? And I, I would definitely have a problem with, you know, having to have Darcy count how many bags are in my garbage can. I, I, I really would, I think, to begin with, we need, we need to at least keep it in a garbage bag or a garbage can. Because I was talking with Darcy one day and, and we still have the problem of people leaving little boxes and cans and stuff all over. Is that, is that still happening that, that, you know?
Yes, there's a lot of loose waste that people just throw their cereal boxes out there.
If we could start at least enforcing what, what's in the bylaw and making sure that, you know, that might be a starting place is that it's either in a, in a can or in a, in a bag tied, or, you know, or in a can, that, that would, that would be okay with me. Right now, like I say, with the confusion and the limit, it, it, I have a hard time with that.
How are you going to enforce it?
Well, the enforcement's easier.
Why don't we just say four bundles, not way more than 40 pounds, whether it's in a garbage can?
For garbage cans.
Garbage cans or whether it's a...
Four garbage cans or four...
Or four bags.
Four bags.
Or twigs tied together or something.
None of which weigh more than 40 pounds.
Why, why don't we change the language?
So now, can we have a resolution? Marion?
Darcy and I are just chatting here, sorry, but he's, we're wondering if we change it from the four refuse receptacles to four garbage receptacles. So it would be garbage cans. You can't have more than four garbage cans.
And I could fill that garbage can up with little, little plastic bags.
Yeah, you can fill it up with 10 little bags if you want, but it can't weigh more than 40 pounds.
That's absolutely perfect.
Can we have a vote on that? That's by way of resolution. Can we have a vote on that?
Hold, hold on a second. So you're going to change it to four garbage can?
Instead of four bags.
Okay, all right. So now everybody in town needs to have a garbage can.
But they can't have more than four bags or four cans, right? So if you don't have cans, then you can only have four bags.
And none of, none of those bags or cans can weigh more than 40 pounds.
You're okay with that, Darcy?
Yes, and if they have two bags and two cans and they happen to have six bags in those two cans each, that doesn't matter as long as it's under the weight limit.
Yes, that's a, the weight is a problem.
So now, Marion?
Good luck.
Well, two bags and two cans is four, right? Or it doesn't matter.
Any combination of bags or cans, none of which weigh more than 40 pounds.
Alexey, four, perfect.
Okay, so without the resolution to change the bylaw to state that?
I will make that resolution.
And then we'll change the bylaw and bring it back to the next meeting.
Now, we need a vote on that resolution. Any combination of bags or cans back to a maximum of four.
Four.
But the, but the, the understanding has to be that the can can hold whatever in bags.
Sags or, or cans.
No more than 40 pounds. Okay? All right, so we vote on the resolution.
Did Jill get that resolution?
I'm sure we'll take it, but yes, I've got it.
Okay, so we vote on the resolution. Okay, all in favor of that resolution to tighten up the week? Thank you very much. Now...
We have separate.
And separate is where and when?
We'll just bring it up.
Okay, I need to declare recess. I do not have a four-hour bladder, sorry.
All right.
Oh, boy.
Counselor Creed moves to reconvene and I'm giving you the floor. Let's have a couple of three comments on phase-in period, a grace period. Hopefully, if we can do it, say, January 1st, for example, that 90-day period might be out. But I don't know. I just think that the longer we draw it out, the more trouble it asks.
My thought was, you know, what, you know, at the time that this, you know, bylaw be implemented, as, as a goodwill gesture and it's a grace period to phase it in, we just give everybody 12 tags, they can use it up in the first six months or the first year or whatever, or not use them at all. But it would just be a nice gesture to, you know, put that in place as a grace period and as a something to say, "Okay, we understand it a little bit."
I'm sure administration is going to want us to do a couple of things. The length of the grace period, 90 days, six months, and they're also going to want us to tell them how many get out of jail. Then to give them two as well.
We've got a huge education process ahead of us.
I don't, I don't think it's that huge, but I mean, you know, what, what are your thoughts, council? How long do you think a grace period? Three months, nine months? What do you want us to do?
You see, three months, that takes you into the new year, I think that's good.
Oh, I'm just saying, just give them, give them the tags and they, and, you know, without an expiry date on them and they can use them.
Why wouldn't they put an expiry date on them?
I mean, I, I'd say a number of tags rather than a number of months.
Well, but see, the other thing is, we've talked about having a grace period at which time everything would be implemented, the four bags, the receptacles or whatever. And in the meantime, we would need...
Oh, okay, I, I get you. You're saying, saying not, not have, have a grace period where, where we just warn them that this is coming up? Okay.
The, the new bylaw will be implemented on whatever date we decide. And then we would also have to decide how many get out of jail cards they get. And I guess it doesn't make any sense to give the, the free tags until the period of enforcement starts, right? Because it's sort of self-pity.
Yeah, 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 right.
In my, in my mind, January 1st?
That's four months. That should be adequate.
And then, and then you're gonna lose anything for that for the first year after that, or that they could use?
Well, I think, I think, what, what do you think, council? I mean, you've had a lot more experience.
Yeah, we, we had experience with that. The, the tags were, had a year on them, so they were used on a regular yearly basis. You had 12, could use them, not use them, use them, whatever. They were not to be shared with your neighbors and your doors, it was yours.
But it's interesting because your limit...
That's a black market.
Your limit, Nicole, was one bag, right?
One bag, one, one large, 40 pounds. Transparent.
Actually, you know that's exactly what would happen. You sit down.
Hey, so...
Hurts the by itself.
So let's, let's...
Also, a non-transferable, you could transfer them.
You'd have garbage tags on the black box.
I really don't think 90% of households aren't going to, this isn't going to make a huge difference to more or another because they're, they're under that four-bag or four garbage can limit.
But what it does, what it does, it helps you with those time when you have excess company, when you have Christmas time, when people are not so desirous to go to the transfer station or whatever, that it deals with that.
Okay, council, let me ask the question. Would you like to see, when we finish with some of the wording in the bylaw, the third reading, would you like to see that implemented January the 1st? Does that sound good for you?
That gives us four months, that's a good date.
Okay, now, would you like to see it, how many tags? And, and would, if we put in big print, 2014 only, then that way they can use them anytime during 2014? And does that sound good upon implementation?
Because otherwise it starts to...
How many you'll give them though?
Twelve.
Is it twelve?
The question would be, why do you want to limit the time that they can use those 12 tags? If you're just, otherwise they'd have to come buy some more, right?
That's true.
So if you're going to give everybody 12 free tags, let them use them for however long.
For as long as they can. So then, are we going to, are we going to give them more free tags? That's the next question.
Oh, like on a yearly basis or, or just one year, one time?
Just a one-time situation. Here's some free tags, right? Is that the intent of, of the...
That's, that's what I would say, your first year.
Okay, so for the first year of implementation, they get 12 tags. Afterwards, there is a cost for all the extra bags and that's the way it goes.
Now, are we good with four?
Well, to me, that's much more than other towns that say two.
And to, to be clear, then we understand, any combination of four bags or bins, cans, none, none of which should exceed 40 pounds. Okay, all right.
The problem is, if you say four bags, you've got to specify size and weight.
No, it could be four bags or, or cans.
We're talking 40-pound bags.
Yeah, 40 pounds.
So we call them 40-pound bags.
Well, if I've got six bags, I can put them in two garbage cans, that's fine.
Okay, now, have you got everything you need, Marion?
I just need a motion that this is effective January 1st because that's a change to the bylaw. The bylaw said it was effective upon third reading.
Yes, that's right.
Effective January 1st?
Yes, that the transition, the transition period regarding this new bylaw be put in place as of January the 1st, 2014.
The transition period would end on December 31st.
Yes.
The transition period starts now.
Yeah.
Ending the 31st of December, 2014.
And we won't be picking up garbage on January the 1st, depending on the, anyway, so, so, okay, so you get the sense that we have a vote on the, the new bylaw to take effect, January the 1st, 2014? All in favor? And that was, okay, all right.
After the second month, you'll probably give them the bytags on January the 1st.
Community irrigation line connections. There have been inquiries from individuals in town, out of town, businesses, private individuals about hooking on to the community irrigation line and connecting on. Now, we don't need, I don't think we need a lengthy discussion on this, other than give administration our acceptance or our support that they come up with after having done some background, some, excuse me, some policies and some costs and, you know, metering, connection fee. If it's too expensive, then it's going to be counterproductive. Is anyone opposed to individuals or businesses hooking up to our community irrigation?
We're dealing with raw water, right? I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I think that would actually be a great thing if they could do that. The unfortunate part is not everyone's in a position to access an irrigation line. So I mean, it could cost some taxpayers more money to water the lawn.
There's no question, there's no question.
So I mean, I, is there a fair, I don't know if fairness comes into it or...
No, because if their cost is prohibited, then they just go back to giving coordinated water to the lawn.
That keeps it...
I mean, when I look, when I look at some people on Eastland who use irrigation water there, they pay so much money for, from May to October, whenever that line is open. And they don't have a meter. They, they pay a flat rate to use so many gallons of water there. So, and I don't know if they had to pay for the hookup to that line. I would like to know more how that happened and under which condition it happened. So I think we need to do a little bit more research.
Well, that's, yeah, so...
I suspect most people want to do this if we're sitting on 33 acres of land. It's not, you know, good for me.
Over there is 20 acres, it's a different story.
Yeah, just for clarification, what Councilor Cullen's talking about though is the ethnic irrigation district.
Yes, exactly.
Which functions very differently than what we would with our community irrigation line. Our recommendation is that every connection to our irrigation line be metered. It would have to be metered so that we could track it. So, ethnic irrigation, levied irrigation, they function differently than we would with our community irrigation.
So yours would be more as per individual, correct?
Having said that, are we okay as a council that we entertain and then have administration do the research and present to us in 14 days or whatever, proposal to, as to how, you know, implication, connection costs, metering, meter use?
Well, it affects every household in our town.
No, because some it's going to be prohibited. Some are way too far away.
Far away.
Way too far away. And at some point, if you're three blocks away, that's probably even prohibited. Because you're going to pay the cost to hook, to get the water.
If you take an example, say, Donald Levett runs right by his place, right? So for him it'd be, it'd be no rain. For him, he's got three acres there. He can hook on, put a meter on it, use the raw waters to treat it water.
This isn't something that there's possibility of making available to everybody. Just very few. The golf course will have it.
It could be a little bit.
Donald Levett will have it.
I mean, I understand...
Ellison, Ellison Estates, they're two...
Potentially, yeah.
I understand that the temple was at one point interested in that, but they're maybe too far away too, are they?
Well, there's still the potential for the temple to be on, but it would mean an extension to the existing line. So that would be another phase of the project.
Okay, so that would be the last, in the last phase of the project, it would be up that way.
Okay, so I think we have enough approval to go ahead and proceed further with information gathering and so forth, okay? Next item is the storm sewer that is filling up with cement, almost filled up with cement. So we have a situation, Marion, you want to just give us the quick and dirty on that?
Sure. I better get up for both of these. As you're aware, we've had some flooding on Main Street the last couple of years during those flash floods. And in my time with the town, which I won't tell you how many years that's been, but it's happened occasionally when we've had heavy rains like that. So this last event, this summer, I asked the staff to investigate the root cause of that situation there and see if there was an alternative. Maybe we could twin a line or something to create more capacity there and eliminate the problem. What we discovered in that was that the line running from the TD Bank to First Street East, so it would go in front of the Southwest Concrete building there, is almost plugged solid with cement. So over time, now, there's been a cement business down there for, how long, Councilor Creed? I don't even know how many.
Quite a long time.
Fifty years, 50 years or so. So I'm sure it's just, you know, over time that's how built up, but it's eventually sealed itself off. And then as well, from that intersection of that alleyway through Second Avenue is, also has some problems. It's not as congested, but it, it does have some problems. So our recommendation to council is that we replace both of those lines. The line running along First Street East is actually in the same location as we just did our sanitary trunk main. And so we would like to get that done before we go ahead with curb and pavement. So we've put that off for one year, just for your information, so that we, we can get this line replaced. We have ordered the materials and the staff, as soon as they're done on 3A Avenue, will be prepared to move forward with that. So we're looking for a motion from council to approve the funding sources. This is for equip, the equipment and materials only, not including wages. 16,000 will come from the federal gas tax fund and 12,000, $3 from the council-approved capital, that we still have money available in our budget.
Can I have that motion, please? Counselor Edmonds makes that motion? Any further discussion? Do we all understand what we're doing here, Councilor Creed?
You know, in the request for decision, there's some indication that you negotiate with Southwest Concrete to see if they can contribute something on that?
Correct. We're still in negotiations with, with the current owner. We're anticipating that we will come to a resolution fairly quickly. We're actually looking at some swapping of materials and a few things, maybe to assist with the poor project as well. So it may not be a cash donation, but...
Well, I just think they have the ability to, for in-kind contributions, they have equipment and...
So we're having that conversation with them as, as we speak.
So let's go to Counselor Smith.
So after, after we found out that the line was plugged here with the concrete and stuff like that, what's, is there any way to mitigate that from happening in the future or what's...
Well, we, again, we're working with the contractor. The way the system is currently designed and some of the work that Heath has done there since he took over, we anticipate we'll eliminate this happening in the future. 50 years ago, the industry ran, ran very differently than it does today. So that's, that is part of it. that is part of the problem.
So, the jury, there was probably...
And we actually, before replacing it... sorry, I might just back up a bit here. One of the things we tried to do is actually drill through it, have McGill's grime, and they can't get through, so that's why we need to propose it.
Councilor Cronin?
Okay, we still have the cement plant there, so in the future, there's quite possibility of having some runoff. So, I would like to know, what do we intend to do as a yearly maintenance or regarding the problem?
That's the other side of the problem, is we will be doing an annual maintenance program, and we will camera that line on an annual basis. Now that we have our own camera, we can do that.
Is there something there where we can share the cost of the maintenance, because it's going to have to be more frequent than the other lines?
Most of our lines should be on an annual maintenance anyway, and so it's just a cost of doing business, I think. But, like I said, the practices currently of the cement plant as to what they were 50 years ago, this isn't something that Heath has done himself, and it's not something that probably Jack did himself. It's a combination of all those years. You know, the wind blows and stuff gets down into the system when it rains, right? Because you've got that dust from the cement to...
Okay, I will call a question that we fund the cost of the new lines. All in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Now, reference was made to purchasing a sewer service line camera. It's there. I'd like that motion, please, and we'll discuss it. Move by Councilor Cronin to fund the purchase of the Verisite... Let me repeat it. The camera. Any discussion on the motion to fund the purchase of the camera for $9,504?
Good question. Now, did we not already have a camera?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if I could clarify that, because this camera is a smaller camera. We currently have a camera that we can use in the main. This is a smaller camera that we can use in the service lines, so that when we go into a home to assist the residents, we're able to see what the problem is and better help our citizens with some of the problems that they have.
I think there would be a...
Okay, I'm going to call that vote. All in favor, funding for the camera? Thank you very much. The next one is the revising of council remuneration policy. We're going to need a motion, but we maybe need a little discussion prior to the motion. If you look on that page where the 2014 remuneration fees are there, the proposed ones, the $4,800 the committee is recommending is an increase from 2936. That's for the mayor. I won't be here. The counselor is from 1790 to 3600. And this is a fairly sizable jump, but not even... doesn't even begin to close the gap between us and Burks and every other municipality around. Does anybody have any questions on what's being proposed? Councilor Cronin?
I looked at it and compared it with what we had before. I don't say that we don't deserve it. I'm just looking at it from an impact on the budget, which is huge. You start to look at the quarterly paid for counselors, it's jumped by 100%. We used to get 1790 quarterly, now it's 3600. That's over 100%. For the many annual, was not as big a jump, 64%. But the impact on the budget is something like $51,000. $51,000 is a sizable amount of money. You divide that by 1,100 a household, is still an extra 50 bucks per household in taxes. Can we truly justify that even if we are so far behind the rest? Or should we do it more on an incremental base to be able to suffer?
Counselor, have you... have you an alternate proposal? And seriously, in all honesty, do you have an alternate proposal in mind?
I would think that 100% increase overnight is too much. But if we were to do it as an increment over the next four years, that increase over four years, I can see it. It's not as painful on the budget.
So, let's throw some numbers in there. From 2936, where would you want to go? Do you want to go to 3600?
Well, if we look at the spread divided by four increases, maybe over the next four years.
One quarter of that amount.
Yeah, four of the spread per year for the next...
But even numbers are nice to work with. So, I guess what I'm going to suggest is, instead of 4,800, maybe it becomes 3,600?
Well, the spread is 1,800, so divide by four years, $450 per year.
Okay, so basically, what Counselor Cronin is saying is the proposed increases are about 100%. So, you're saying you'd feel more comfortable with 25% increase?
Per year, yes. I mean, I understand that we deserve a fair recognition, but I also understand our budget is limited.
Counselor, you're... I mean, Marion, you had a comment.
I was just going to say, rather than trying to decide what those numbers are tonight, we can come back with an amended policy showing the progress of...
An amended fee schedule. Okay, is counsel comfortable doing that?
I'd like to cast one comment, Mayor, because I sat on that committee with you. Looking over what is being paid by other communities our size, we're the low town on the totem pole. We've got to catch up some way to increase the fees. I don't think anybody around this table ran for town council because of the fees they were going to get. And I think that's a good sign, but I still think we have to make it worthwhile for people to sit around this table.
Well...
Because they're using their personal time, and that's important.
So, counsel, let me see if we agree. Because if we agree with Counselor Cronin's suggestions, I'll need a motion to give to direct administration to come back with a revised fee schedule.
I think that's a good idea.
Are you prepared to make the motion, Counselor?
Yes. I'm prepared to make a motion to revise the remuneration fee and for administration to come back with a revised schedule.
Not to exceed 25% per year. Okay. Any discussion on motion? I will call a question all in favor. Carrie, opposed? Okay, wonderful. So, all right. Motion carries. Improving intercultural relations workshop. I've given some serious thought to going to that, partially because I think it's, in all honesty, that's probably been one of my main concerns. And so, someone might say, "Well, Mayor, how come you're going because you're not going to be here in two months?" There may be none that's here in two months. We don't know that. So, I mean, that's kind of where I'm suggesting that I would volunteer to do that, go with that, an intercultural relation workshop. Now, the next motion is regarding a requested extension just for the development period for Mr. Atkins. And he's requesting a one-year extension. He's closing... he's getting close to having everything met, getting very, very close, but there's a few things that he needs to take care of to meet some of our specified requirements. Counselor Smith?
I'll make a motion to extend for one year.
Remove to extend Creed Works subdivision permit period by one year. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a question. Let me translate, please. How's the extension?
This is the second one. But he's had... he's had a lot of very detailed documentation to get put together, so...
Counselor Cronin?
Okay, I just... maybe Counselor Cronin, maybe you can help us, because you have dealt with that, with that development, and you know... you would know it better than I would. I'm trying to understand, all the conditions that have not been met are due to the fact that none of the engineering were stamped and approved, and OSC did not ever accept that in a list of requirement. If you look at the list, there's a few moments, amount of list of things that have not yet been fulfilled. And what OSC is asking is to try to see what we as a town feel it's okay and don't need a proof... seal proof.
I'd have to sit down with Perry to see what all the concerns are, but I...
Because I understand there are some conditions that the town can accept as being possible, but some need, it seems to me from the letter I read, require more thorough investigation.
I know he's been banging heads with Lawrence, and I don't know all the details on that.
Marion, can you give us some?
Yeah, just as late as this afternoon, we've had another conversation with Perry at Old Man. There's only about two items that are still outstanding. There was some... there was some miscommunication, I guess, as to what we had received and what we haven't received. And as of Friday afternoon or Monday morning, I don't remember the time exactly, we actually received some stamp drawings, which will assist us as well.
All right, so that's what they were talking about. That was my concern, so...
And there is some butting of heads a bit, so I'm trying to manage that.
There's refereeing.
Yeah, because, I mean, with a new regulation coming regarding flood lanes, we need to protect ourselves, because municipalities are now going to be fully responsible for any problem, because the governor would say, "You knew." So, you need to have proper guidelines there.
Basically, the provincial government said, "Don't count the mess in the vacuum."
And it's exactly what I said.
So, I'm going to call out questions. All in favor of the one-year extension?
Oh, depending on...
Okay, move to extend it for one year. Now, you've got the letter here from Chief Mountain Husky. This individual is requesting waiver, forgiveness, or whatever, claiming she and I, I think we probably can take her at her word.
What?
That she misread her tax assessment notice, and she did pay it by the 19th of July, which was...
Before the deadline.
The deadline was actually July the 3rd, I think.
Can I maybe address that? When we had our piece of property and I received my very first assessment, to tell you the truth, I did exactly the same thing, and ended up by paying tax with penalty, because I misread that document also, which leads me to think that maybe we need to make it a little clearer as a document. Tom can maybe look at making more clear, clear about this deadline. I don't know. But I made exactly the same error, so I sympathize with the people.
Okay, so if we want to do as she requests, I'm guessing this is she, that we waive the late penalty. Now, probably should read 2013 business property, Jen. Is anyone prepared to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
You want to waive the fee, the late penalty?
Yeah, because I understand the conundrum. What was said?
$616.70. Any discussion on the motion, counsel? Are we comfortable with waiving that?
It's not that she did not know that there was tax to be paid. She knew, but...
I would suggest that in our notices with the tax assessment that come out of Remain, somehow make that due date clear.
It needs to be...
See, this year, we had about a three-day grace period, because the expiry date was on a Saturday or a Sunday, and Monday was a holiday. So, really, the deadline couldn't be imposed after...
No.
Till about Tuesday.
Anyway.
All right, so call a question all in favor of waiver. Carrie, thank you. Now, there's a conference, municipal finance officers. What's the name of the...
Government Finance Officers Association.
Government Finance Officers Association. And under Noel's contract, she's entitled to go to two conferences annually. She's been to the provincial one. Marion has assured me that this is an extremely valuable conference, and it's certainly not just for the trip that she's going to take it. She has actually offered to pay half of... Tbilis only for half the mileage. I think if there's value here, and it sounds like there is value here, I think we should pay for all of the mileage.
I would suggest we pay all of it.
Counselor Dow makes the motion that we pay her expenses to the convention in Saskatoon. Any discussion on the motion? See how your words suggest, we spell it N-O-V-E. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Financial report is there for your perusal.
I have one question, Mayor.
Okay.
And our liabilities, long-term debt, Marion, over what period does that last?
The longest one is 10 years.
20 years?
10.
10 years?
Yep. And that's actually there.
We're only liable for $140,000 this year, then.
That'll be down to nine this year, because we took that last...
Okay, the town council motion list is there for your scrutiny, the bylaw, animal control.
You need a motion on the financial report?
Oh, yes, we do, sorry. Counselor Dow moves approval of the financial report for June 2013. All in favor? Thank you. My omission, thank you for that, Counselor Dow. Town council motion list, bylaw, native, development, capital project report. Are we getting... do we have that?
It's in the... it actually ended up in the package.
It ended up in the package. Central Angeles dispatch, no. 9G market surveillance report. Can I have a motion on it? It needs to be approved by motion. Counselor Cronin, so moves. All in favor? A formality, but it needs to be approved by motion. There's a lot of information there on the AUMA provincial flood policy update. Any questions, concerns arising from 10... sorry, from 9A through H? Seem to... go into correspondence, municipal affairs. Crown of the continent, I received an invitation to go to a local official's luncheon. Actually, it's dinner in West Glacier. I am seriously considering going, but I've got to find out what the cost is. I will not intern overnight, have no intention to stay overnight. It's probably a good opportunity for PR. Three years ago, it was held in Waterton, and I know I was going to go, but I had a conflict of schedule, and I went to go. Two years ago, it was held in Paulson, Montana, last year in Ferney. And so, I am intending to go, but again, they're inviting me, so hopefully they'll pay the duty, but I have no intention to stay overnight. So, there'll be no accommodations for my... I'm a little bit concerned about 11C. What are your thoughts, counsel?
It's regarding the safety issue and the change.
Request for donation. I think that's something good for the county.
That was my thinking.
Yeah, it's more to county resident than...
Then we can't tell county what to do either. I mean, I had some...
But the school already hosts the program, right? It's cost and benefit from that.
Well, and I have a question here. Does this fit in our policy for donations? I'm not sure that, but I agree that the county hopefully has received this same request. And so, unless I'm seeing a motion, then there'll be no action flowing from this piece of correspondence. Alberta Environment and Sustainable Research and Development, Alberta Health Services. Again, we're scanning through these pieces of correspondence, and if you see something, if something jumps out at you, then let's make sure that we have it brought to our attention. Alberta Recycling, Alberta Transportation, Alzheimer's is a thank you letter. Alberta Congress Board, I'm not sure who that is. Alberta Culture. Now, there was one in there that caught my attention. Let me see which one it was. We have the opportunity to nominate someone for volunteering.
Alberta Culture.
Alberta Culture, that's 11J. Now, am I at liberty to... or will this be... have to be done in camera to... Now, am I at liberty to, or would this be, have to be done in camera, to suggest a person that might qualify for that Alberta Culture Award?
It has different, different take, right? As I say, it can be, there is two different possibility of submission, a different level for the junior or for senior or for...
The name that I was going to suggest had to do with Kismarima, and the folks who developed it and worked hard on that for about five years. Is Counselor interested that maybe we see if we can look if there's some merit in making that nomination for the award?
I think there is merit there.
Sure. There's probably community that...
Well, I mean, I'm hoping someone near the office could do that. I don't know how much time that would take to do, put that together. Okay, so everyone knows who I'm talking about. Are we comfortable, I mean, I don't control this agenda particularly, but I thought that could be a possible worthwhile nomination to make to some worthy recipients. Okay, can I have a motion, please? Counselor Smith moves we go on camera. All in favor? Counselor Creed, your motion, please.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we approve in principle the offer by Mr. Scott to look after the, or the tourist information center, subject to, subject to an approved contract.
Lease.
Or lease contract.
Okay. We, we good with that?
Did we cover what you said?
What you're going to do with the Albert Beazer?
Well, we can only take one contract, I mean, one person. We like this, we like this one.
It's for sort of purpose.
That's the one that I'd accept, I, I make my motion that we accept in principle.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Motion carries. Another motion, please, or adjourned? Now, by the way, for the record, I told Ms. Melanie Wood, because I'm at the IGA a couple times a week, I told her that I would be happy to bring my truck over on the day she's done her yard work, and I'll load her waste into my truck, and I'll take her.
I want to load it.